Okay, I'm going to call to order the Haywood County Commissioners Meeting for February 6, 2017, and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for this day. Lord, I pray that you give us wisdom as we do the business of our county. I pray for our federal and state and our other local affected officials, Lord, that you'd give us all wisdom as we lead our nation and our state and our county. And I just pray for our law enforcement, that you'd watch over and protect them, as well as our military that are overseas fighting for our freedoms. We pray, Lord, for their families, that you would keep them encouraged, Lord, and I pray that you'd bring each and every one of them home safely. Thank you for the weather we've had, and we ask these things of you.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, thank you, everyone, for being here this morning. We have good attendance. First item that we have is a public comment session. This is a time for anyone who wants to come up at the meeting and make any brief comments, maximum of three minutes can do so. I have a few people that have filled out a request, and I'll call those names out, and then after that, anyone else that wants to come forward can do so. First person is Ted Carr. Morning, Ted.
Good morning, Commissioner Kirkpatrick. Mr. Commissioners, Friday, three days ago, I got a letter from the new governor, Roy Cooper. It said, and I'll paraphrase this, "With the 2018 elections, I will no longer be voting for my senator. The North Carolina Council of State will appoint all senators." Wow! That astounded me. I'd be losing an important right, a right to vote. I called my friend, Lieutenant Governor Dan Forrest, and he said, "That's right. Makes things more simple, eliminates campaign expense. All the states will be going to that." He said, "I should be happy with that, because I voted for almost all the Council of State, except the Secretary of State, Troxler for agriculture, and Johnson for public education." But that's not the point at all, I said. You're taking a right away from it. It's not a privilege, it's a right. And you're not even asking me. So by now, you've figured out that I've made this all up. I made it up to make a point, because Friday, three days ago, in the agenda, I read that there's a request for a resolution requesting the Haywood County Register of Deeds to be appointed. No, not the registrar of deeds, the clerk of court. No, tax collector. I don't know how you made that decision, but the tax collector will be appointed. You know, they're all the same, same level, but they'll be appointed by the commissioners, not elected by the public. So that's another wow for me. That astounded me, because I'd be losing, seriously, an important right. So my point is that action should be stopped, should go no further, absolutely no further, without a public hearing. I urge this body to hold a public hearing. Why? So you can hear from your constituents, hear the pros and cons, and then vote the will of the constituents. General, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. All right, next we have Philip Gibbs. Morning, Mr. Gibbs.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for your time. I'm here with the community to request to enter into negotiation with the town of Waynesville for acquisition of the property at 10 Cavalry Street for a park. This is a vacant building that has been there for years, that has been abandoned, and that has been drug-infested in the homeless camp out there. It's an eyesore to our community. I understand that you've had an offer for somebody else to purchase this property, and maybe they were, I'm not sure, maybe they're supposed to have been speaking for the community, but whatever they're proposing is very vague, and what we've heard that they're proposing, the community do not want. The community would love to have a park. I know there are plenty of parks in town, but we do not have a park on our side of town. And what we'd like to do is to hopefully get this piece of property that it will uplift our community, because it is an eyesore, it is a place for people to hide out and do all kind of crazy, bad things, and this brings down our community. Now, I know that if anybody's familiar with this piece of property, you could see that would be a perfect place for a community park. We can vision a beautiful pavilion and other things that the community would like to have. Now, I stand here speaking for the community. This is the community, and we hope that the Board of Commissioners, we've been before, the Alderman Board, we got positive feedback. Now, we needed to come to talk to the Commissioners about getting on board, hopefully, to back us and to do this. It will not only help our community, but it will show the world what the little, small town of Waynesville, North Carolina can do, and that the town of Waynesville is for everybody. So we're hoping that the Commissioners will get on board with us and help us go forth with this, so that we can have a nice community park, because it is an eyesore, because it is negative, and we need some positivity in our community to uplift our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs.
Thank you.
Okay, those are all the written requests I have. Would anyone else like to come up this meeting for public comment? Come forward, ma'am. If you'll just state your name, please, for the record.
My name is Christine Severs, and good morning, Commissioners. I know the area that he speaks of for the park, I used to have a dock that I would walk over there. And there is a lot of vacant areas, and there really is nothing over in that area of town. I know we have a lot of beautiful parks. This is just one area that needs to be, you know, polished up a little bit, and a park would do that. It would give a place for the kids. It would also provide the community a place for picnics and community events. So I just want to add my request to, for you to approve the park. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Severs. Morning, sir, if you'll just state your name.
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is James Geenan. I'm a retiree, a retiree residing in Waynesville over the last six years. I worked in community development for years, and as a practitioner thereof, I can't see anything more important to youth than something as preventative, as a preventative of nasty things, as a park. Getting to know the community around the pigeonery, the center, et cetera, I find such a positive influence there, and such a welcoming influence to the rest of our community. And anything that would support this and the youth there, I think would be of interest to our community. And I just want to ask that if you'd look favorably upon this request that Mr. Gibbs is making and his community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Walter Bryson. I'm the resident that the park would be next to, and I was hoping that we'd be able to accomplish this, because there's one time that one of the trees on that property fell over my house, and the town did not have any interest because I was there, and I had to pay Henson to come and remove the tree. I'd had a lien on this property that whoever purchased it, but then I came to town, and I told them if they were going to put a park there, I wouldn't even worry about that anymore, because that would truly hit me out. And as I said, it's drug-infested. If you've ever even been in that building, you could see the damage, because it was a nice building, it was a church, and everything in the building was tore out. You go there, there's mattresses, there's beer cans and everything. And just a few months ago, I had to call the town of Waynesville to have them my sewage line. I was getting ready for church. The sewage lines in my house were backing up and going up, and come to find out that someone had taken my sewage line, and they'd put beer bottles, beer cans, rocks, and things in my sewage line, and I had to pay quite a bit of money to have that fixed. And I said that they were talking about closing that street, and that'd be one of the best things that could happen on my behalf as a member of that area on Cavalry Street, to have it turned into a park and that street closed, that it would benefit my family and our situations there.
Thank you, Mr. Bryson.
My name is William Staley. I am the pastor of Jones Temple Church there on Hillside Drive, and I'm in representative of the community there of having this park, because when the community is satisfied and doing well, then you have a better people that you deal with. I'm the pastor there. I'm not just the pastor for Christian folk, but I'm a pastor for people. And wherever I'm needed or can be assisted, where I can make things better for the city, the county, I'm willing to do everything that I can, because it would make the community a much better place, and it would make the city a much better place. So I am here in support of a park or some recreation that it would enhance the community there on Hillside Drive. Thank you.
And that's Pastor Staley?
Right.
Staley?
Staley.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else? About any, any other matter, any matter that you want?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Michael Tate, as you know. I think at the last meeting that you had, you had a charge to Ira Dove to work with me to, about this situation on the property, my interest in it. Since that time, I have given, I've given Mr. Dove a proposition for your consideration, and, what else was I going to say? Did you receive that, right?
Go ahead.
Yes, I did receive an offer for $9,000 from Mr. Tate. Is that the, that's what you're discussing?
Yes.
Okay.
And the other, I had a list of things within my proposition for your consideration. There was other items on it, wasn't Ira? I just had the one, but anyway, anyway, I guess the situation here with the community and everything is tax or no tax. I'm willing to pay the tax. Are you willing to sell it? Are you willing to give it to the town? I told you my, my thing was the event center, and I was thinking about that the other day, and I said it would be good to have an event center at Martha Lutherton King Park. I think, I think we can work in another consideration, and all ventures will be satisfied. I'm for the part. I'd like to have a park, but I got an interest in the event center that I want to present to you. But as like I was saying, an event center at Martha Lutherton King Park would be good. I'm not trying to refute the part. Do you hear that from me? I'm just looking for my interest, and my interest is trying to put a event center there, clean up that area. I've done some more investigation in the property itself, and it looked like a feasible proposition on my part, but now what does the county want to do with the city, I mean with the town? It doesn't matter. I want to work with you, and I want to at least get a chance to buy this property. I have some, I have some prints of what I want to do for your, for you to see, if you want to see it.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Tate.
All right.
Anyone else? And I'll just remind you, this is public comment. We are dealing with this issue on old business, so there will be discussion later as well, but if you want to speak and you're from the public, this, about this matter, any others, this is the time. Come on up, sir.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Alfred Caldwell.
I didn't recognize you.
I didn't get a clear understanding of what Mr. Tate was discussing there about his investment in the property. He wanted, he wanted to buy the property himself and pay the taxes on it. I didn't get a clear understanding of what he was going to put on the property, or how the community was going to, how the community was going to get any value out of what he's doing. I think he's putting something there to, to, he's saying that he would pay the taxes, but he is putting something there that you would have to pay to participate in. If it, if we put a park there, the, the taxpaying citizens, which I'm included, would still pay the taxes on it. So, he said he'd pay the taxes. We still will be paying the taxes, we'll be just paying them as a group, but I still didn't get a clear understanding of what he was putting on the property. I'd like to get a clear understanding of that. And whatever he's putting there, make sure that the community, which is all of us, can get good service out of it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. Okay, anyone else? All right. So we'll move on to the next matter after public comment. It's constituent concerns. I'll start with you, Mike.
Just, you know, still working on some broadband or internet situations and with the county manager and our broadband committee, and so it's ongoing, and we've been dealing with it.
All right. Kevin?
I did have a couple of conversations along with what Ted was talking about, having a public hearing for the tax collector issue. I was fully, you know, prepared to vote for this today, but I, you know, I don't have a problem with a public hearing on that. I've had a public hearing in the public for the last two or three years, and that's what they've, they've been asking overwhelmingly to do that. So I've heard from a lot of the public. I just ran for election last year. I heard from a lot of those people, and that was a, I don't know, it was in the top five of the issues that we had in the county, and I've heard that constantly in the last couple of years, so. But that was a constituent concern I had, was to have a public hearing.
Bill?
I'm working with Ira on concerns, so.
Brandon?
I just want Michael to get the internet going, so.
Oh, I'm trying.
No, I do the same as Kevin. I've had a lot of constituents that have come to me since Friday and asking for a public hearing for the tax collector issue that we'll be voting on today, so that's only concern I have.
Okay. And I would make comment about some of those things, but they're actually on the agenda, and we will be discussing all the items that were talked about at a public comment here in just a minute. And Chip Killian asked if he could just have a minute to speak to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a lot of folks know, for the last year, over a year, I've been transitioning to get back here full-time, and I really wanted to do that. Finally, I'm back. I just wanted folks to know, because I'm asked this all the time. We've now sold our house in Raleigh, I'm here, and, and I have been full-time since the first of the year, but Mr. Dove's been very nice to me, let me go through the process I've had to go through to move and sell my house, but that's all completed now. I just wanted folks to know, I'm back. Thank you.
All right, so that's for everybody to know. If you want to see Chip Killian, you just come up here to the county offices and ask him about any legal questions you have about the county.
That's fine.
Okay. We'll move on to administrative agency reports. We've got a big report today, the Haywood County 2017 Real Property Reappraisal Overview with David Francis here, with Judy Hickman, and Greg West, and Ron McCarthy. Morning, David.
Good morning, Commissioners. Hope I had a good Sunday Super Bowl. Stayed way past my bedtime. Interesting game, that's for sure. Just want to emphasize what we have today is a preliminary report. We're not quite done with our figuring, as some might say, so we're still working towards getting everything done. Our goal is to mail out the reappraisal, the new value notices out February 15th, 16th, somewhere right there along those lines, and I will come back to the Commissioners on the 20th of February and give a, more of a report, some, with the math about, you know, exactly what the transpired from the last reappraisal to this one, more in numbers. This has a general overview, so just to let you all see what is ahead, okay? So just to rehash a couple of things that we've talked about in the past, but this could never, can never talk about it too much. Reappraisal is required by North Carolina general statutes at least every eight years. Our last reappraisal was conducted in 2011. We postponed it on the four-year cycle due to we didn't have much of a change in '11, '12, or '13. So we, now, our new reappraisal date is January 1st, 2017. So what that does is reset all the values in Haywood County to market value as of January 1st, 2017. Reappraisal includes land and improvements, which are houses, residential, commercial, agriculture, and industrial properties. This process, again, will reset current market values of January 1st, 2017. Uniform appraisal standards. All property, real and personal, shall, as far as practicable, be appraised or valued at its true value in money. When used in this subchapter, the words "true value" shall be interpreted as meaning "market value," that is, the price estimated in terms of money at which the property would change hands between a willing and financially able buyer and willing seller, neither being under the compulsion to buy or sell, and both having reasonable knowledge of uses to which the property is adapted or which is capable of being used. That also takes into account the highest and best use. Market value is not determined by the tax office, whether it is determined by the actual activity in the market. The tax office simply examines and analyzes market activity to develop formulas for values of individual properties. For example, even though not all properties will sell or rent to be built at the same time, information from those that have, have sold can be used to establish typical market rates for each of these market activities. Those rates can be applied to all properties to ensure that reasonable values can be developed in a uniform way. What it is not, we do not, we do look at foreclosures, we do look at short sales, but they do not factor into our overall computation of values. The county assessor's office nor the Commissioners do not create the value of your property. People define values by their transactions in the marketplace. The assessor's office simply has the legal responsibility to study those transactions and appraise your property accordingly. Market value is not always the price at which a realtor may sell or lease a property, nor is the price that the family or another family member may pay one another. Scheduled Values is the book that I had out here in the fall that is a handbook of the prices, and, you know, takes into account houses that, you know, valued with brick, houses valued with hardy plank siding, with vinyl. It has all those different factors in there, from 1,300 square foot. House is the average house that we appraise. There's a 1,300 square, basically. A C-grade house, nothing spectacular, starts at that basic value, and it works up or down from there. And just importantly, reappraisals are conducted by applying mass appraisal techniques through the analysis of the appraisal staff and the use of computer-assisted mass appraisal, or CAMA, software system, the sales comparison cost approach, and income approach, the three approaches that we use to value all considered when applicable to appraise real property. Neighborhood delineation is the study of the forces which can be considered to have an effect on the property. Neighborhood delineation is very important and helps us get to more closely and more accurate values, as it's taken an entire area, we're able to condense it down and look at the sales and transactions in smaller areas. Neighborhood delineation is providing an opinion of the typical structure, economic factors, and conditions within an area considered a neighborhood. Appraisers use this information to provide a benchmark to compare property within the neighborhood with each other. Provide generally similar geographic area to use as statistical base for sales analysis, sales comparison, both during the 2011 reappraisal and years later, to measure change and update values accordingly. This helps with the CAW, which is the computer-assisted land tables. So our neighborhoods. 2011, we had nine industrials, stayed the same for 17. Commercial, 80, reduced that down to 78. And in residential, we had nine 13, and we've grown to nine 36. The appraisers went through the neighborhoods. When they're looking at sales, and we've carved out, and I'll show you a couple of neighborhoods as we go through, they carved out to isolate those sales where we wouldn't impact other neighborhoods. When we saw a growth or a downturn, we kept those and isolated those even further. As you see here is the, all the colors there represents all the different neighborhoods in the county. The one in the upper left is the biggest neighborhood, and it owns by the US Forest Service up there. So as you may recall from an earlier presentation, about 35 to 36 percent of our properties in Haywood County are exempt or at reduced values due to agriculture, land use, or forestry. Market factor. We use market factors in there to adjust neighborhoods with mass appraisal. The major function of this process is to allow the appraiser to apply a systematic approach and uniform methods and appraisal techniques to entire universe or population of properties. Note, market adjustment factors are typically applied only to major structures. It does not go on land. Market factors just affect buildings. Agriculture remained from the last time, $4.95. Horticulture, $1,020, and forestry are $190, and that is per acre. Forestry did go up from 185 an acre to 190. Real property comprises about 85 percent of our tax base. Public service companies, which would be Duke Power, Bell South, AT&amp;T, and the cell phones are under public service utilities. They comprise about 2.3 percent. Personal property is 5.5 percent, and registered motor vehicles are 7.2 percent of our taxable base in Haywood County. All real properties were, all property transactions were reviewed. Transactions consistent with the statute are qualified for sales analysis. For 2017 reappraisal, 2,501 sales from January 15th through December 16th were used to analyze these trends. We, in 2014, we had about We, in 2014, we had about eight hundred and thirty-five sales, went up to a, a thousand in, uh, fifteen, and then thirteen hundred in 2016. So each year, we've started growing and adding in more and more sales. What we have found, our houses are up. The value of houses are going up. Home sales are about eighty-five percent of the market. Land sales are down. Land sales only consist of fifteen percent of the market. Ellen Sather, Chairman of the Haywood Board of Realtors, estimated there's probably ten years of inventory in the county when it comes to lots and land parcels. When we start appraising property, we start from the ground up. We start on the ground. We look at vacant land sales, going through neighborhoods and looking at vacant land sales, qualifying those land sales to see where the land models are, are there. And what we have found through this is that land sales are still a little bit wobbly, but for the most part, throughout the county, most land sales are down. Doesn't mean every land sale is down, and I'll show you some examples of that, but for the, for most of the county, the land sales are down. This here, this, um, this is foreclosures and short sales. In 2015, we only had twenty foreclosures in, uh, in Haywood County. In 2016, it sprung up, uh, to eighty. Um, and so the same thing with the short sales, about the same percentages. We had another jump from fifteen to sixteen, uh, there that we'd, uh, we thought we were sort of out of the woods there a little bit, but not, not quite there. Here's a map of the qualifying sales, 2015 are the reddish, uh, 2016 are the blue sales. You can see still that belt through there, with the upper and lower being, uh, national forest and, uh, state lands. New construction, uh, for 2015, sixteen, we had a total of three hundred and twenty-two, which still could, could be houses, new people who've, uh, gotten permits and added things that would add value through there. Uh, we added about seventy-six million, uh, in new construction over two years, which has helped, uh, with our downturn here a little bit, bring us back up. Uh, but we were, uh, before the recession, we were adding anywhere between eighty to a hundred million dollars a year, uh, in new construction and new cost, and this seventy-six million only represents over two million. Okay. So is it, when I spoke of, you know, land, you know, having a downturn, this is a, a development up in, uh, the Crusoe, uh, community, but when it first started out, was selling lots between two hundred and three hundred thousand dollars. The last sale in 2016 was for twelve thousand dollars. Uh, subsequently, now they have lost their septic approvals. There's a loss of one million dollars in value on this development alone. This is Haywood County's newest and most expensive property, near the Maggie Valley Country Club. It's pricing out between forty thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand for a tenth, tenth of an acre. Um, so I'm sure if y'all are interested, they'll be glad to sell you the, there's about four more, uh, five more lots up there if you all want to jump on that. Here's another development, uh, loss of value. They were, had lots valued about a hundred and fifty thousand. They've lost sixty-six percent of the value of the lots, uh, in that development from 2016 to 2017. This is a development, uh, in Jonathan Creek, Maggie, whose land sales in there showed lower land sales than what we had in the previous reappraisal. And this where it gets a little bit more interesting. Those land sales went down throughout the neighborhood, but the housing prices in there have went up. So we look at the land sales, the vacant land sales were down, but the house sales in there have went up. So what we're seeing is the appreciation of houses in Haywood County. So if you have a house, your house may appreciate a little bit across the board, some, some may decrease, but with the sales, what we're seeing is, is that the houses are appreciating with these sales. This is an example of this neighborhood. 2016 value was two sixty-three, six hundred. Sales price, three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Increase of sixteen point five percent. Neighborhood across, across the, the way there, 2016 value was four hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Sales price was six hundred and forty thousand, an increase of twenty-three percent. This neighborhood had a dramatic decrease i- in their land models, which were, were close to a hundred and fifty thousand, down to around fifty thousand now, but the houses in there are appreciating. We're not seeing many house sales above that three, uh, three fifty to four hundred thousand range, but when they are selling, it is a very strong price. This is, um, if y'all should know that the, uh, the Rainbow Row in Charleston, the houses down there and how they look, there's three houses here, right there at the, uh, parking lot, right below the chapel of the lake, had three sales in there. The average age of the homes were not, uh, nineteen fifty. The average sale price was three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. This is one of the neighborhoods that we cut out and moved away from some of the rest of the, the Lake Junalaska neighborhoods because we, we had very strong sales around the perimeter of the lake. Very strong sales and dramatic increases from those sales there. Um, one of these, uh, like I said, one of these houses was built in nineteen twenty and sold for four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Another, um, neighborhood near, uh, Junalaska, uh, 2016 value was two hundred and seventy-one thousand eight hundred. Sales price, three seventeen, five hundred. Increase of fourteen percent. Another Ju- Ju- Junalaska house, uh, 2016 value was six thirteen five, sales price six seventy-five, an increase of nine point one two percent. Over in Waynesville, near downtown, 2016 value is one thirty-six, sales price one seventy-two two, increase of nearly twenty-one percent. Over, uh, near Law Ridge, 2016, uh, value two fourteen, seven hundred, sales price two hundred and fifty-five five, increase of nearly sixteen percent. This neighborhood, uh, one block away from, uh, downtown Waynesville, uh, lost, uh, in general, about eighteen percent of value throughout the, they were condominium town homes, top, lost eighteen percent in value. So as you can see, still all over, it's not, you know, everything's not the same. This is, you know, keep reiterating, this is why we have the neighborhoods. This is its own neighborhood, right there. We isolated the sales in this one area and this is how we were determined the values coming forward. This is out in the, um, Pigeon, uh, Community, 2016, uh, three hundred thousand, uh, value, sales price four hundred and ten, increase of nearly twenty-seven percent. Out in, uh, heading towards Beaver Dam, sale of, uh, value is one twenty-four, eight hundred, sales price, uh, sixty-four thousand, a decrease nearly of fifty percent. Out to, towards Asheville Highway, value is two hundred and fifty-one thousand, sales price is a hundred and ninety-five thousand, a decrease of nearly twenty-three percent. Downtown Canton, 2016 value of a hundred and eleven thousand, sales price of a hundred and forty-nine thousand, increase of twenty-five percent. One of the things that we have, uh, taken notice of is a lot of the sales that we are seeing are remodeled houses. Those houses that someone has bought, then remodeled it, and then sold it for, for a higher price. One of the things that we, we've been very mindful of is that we have looked at these sales, you know, and increased the value. So if you bought a house o- over the last few years, you will see your value be more reflective of the sales price. And one of the things that we looked at was that, yeah, there may be some appreciation in that neighborhood, but we didn't go in there and apply a twenty-five percent, you know, factor onto all the houses in this neighborhood just because you had a remodeled sale of one house, okay? We did not take and go with that and apply that one sale when you, it was remodeled and they had an older house. One of the neighborhoods that, uh, we were looking at, um, has the average age, it was over in Canton, had the average age of nineteen forty-five in the neighborhood and had similar sales to, to this, um, that were discussed in remodeled sales. We didn't go back and since we know that they remodeled, that increased their value. And also, it, it changes the depreciation schedule when you have a sales price like that, you've made newer fixtures or add newer, uh, amenities to a house, that should reset your depreciation there. So we didn't go through there and reset everybody's depreciation. We were very mindful of what was happening in the market and looking at these targeted sales and didn't go back and apply everything, you know, to this one sale, but there was, there may be a little bit of appreciation there, but not twenty-five percent. So that makes sense. Okay. Uh, also out in the Canton community, um, took 2016 value three ten, sales price four hundred and thirty, an increase of nearly twenty-eight percent. This was a sale out in, uh, the Crabtree, um, there was vacant land out there. 2016 value was two hundred and forty-three thousand. The sales prices for the three lots were a hundred and eighty-seven thousand three hundred, a decrease of twenty-three percent. Sale out, out in, uh, near Fines Creek, 2016 value was one ten, sales price was a hundred and eighty-five thousand, an increase of forty percent. As you can see, this one has been remodeled as well. Fines Creek, this was a interesting, these things are fairly, these two properties are fairly close, uh, close as the crows fly. Um, one, uh, the property on the left, 2016 value was eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, sales price was six fifty. Property on the right, 2016 value was three seventy-two, sales price is seven fifty. So just neighboring, uh, you know, mountaintops, basically, and there's that drastic of a difference in the sales price to the property. Uh, this is coming up Jay Creek, uh, 2016 value was one eighty-nine, sales price was one twenty-three, a decrease of thirty-five percent. So, how does this affect our communities at large? Uh, the, uh, because we, when, uh, when we get to the twentieth, I'll have more detailed information with, uh, with, uh, true numbers at that point in time. I said we are still in the process and I didn't want to release numbers, but here's what we think will happen to our, our municipalities. Town of Canton, projected loss of value in commercial and residential. Town of Clyde, projected loss in commercial, but a projected gain in residential. Town of Clyde had the, uh, only new development approved over the last four years, and that, that sales, those sales reflect that gain there in residential. Town of Maggie Valley, projected loss of value in commercial and residential. Maggie Valley, uh, as a whole, suffered a greater loss of, uh, uh, value than any of the, uh, four municipalities. Town of Waynesville, uh, commercial districts, uh, will have a gain. Uh, they were, uh, lucky enough to add a Chick-fil-A and, uh, expand Ingalls, and so that offset a lot. They, uh, some of their, uh, commercial districts did go down, but the offset on the global overall view is they go up and there is a projected loss in res- residential value. And of course, for the county, uh, as a whole, projected loss of value in commercial and res- residential for the county, uh, as a whole. And if you have your other municipalities losing value, of course, we're going to lose value, uh, concurrently as well. So, so, as I said, when the notices go out, and this is what the notice will, will look like when it is mailed, um, it'll be filled out, it'll have the date, your account number, your PIN number, it'll have your 2011 appraised value, and as you, you'll have your 2017, your new value there. If you're in, uh, land use, it'll have, have that, um, number, uh, there as well, your property description, and if it was an exemption there, which would be a senior citizens or, uh, veterans, it'll have all the information you need there, but if you have more questions, of course, you know, you can come to, uh, talk with us and the appraisers. We, uh, we have a very informal, uh, uh, process. Once the notices are out there, we have an informal time, which you can come and discuss your appeal or discuss your property concerns, your values with the appraisers during this time, and I'll have all those dates for you, um, when we, when we meet on the twentieth. But one thing that we are, you know, if you have an appraisal, since we are looking at the last two years from fifteen and sixteen, bring that appraisal in. If you have pictures or photographs or something that details your concerns about your property or why you don't think it's worth that much, bring those in. One thing that we will not be looking at is if you simply write there that the value's too high. That doesn't give us any evidence to, to move on or to change anything out. We have to have something to move forward with to be able to examine your property. But those, like I said, those will be in the mail, uh, all the information is there on how to fill out the, uh, appeal. Uh, we try to make everything as friendly as we can. Now, this is the one thing that you can do. Uh, you don't get to really talk about when they, uh, hike your taxes at, uh, the federal, the state level. You get, you are, have the ability to come in here and sit down with somebody who actually appraised your property. Okay. Uh, I'd like to extend my thanks to the reappraisal staff for their hard work and dedicated efforts to this project and the citizens of Haywood County. Those guys in the back there have done tremendous amount of work. Greg West over here, unfortunately, uh, Ms. Hickman cannot be with us today, uh, to prior commitment, uh, but they have done a great job and, uh, they spent a lot of hours and time and effort to try to get this right for the citizens of Haywood County. I'll be glad to take your questions. Greg West is here as well, uh, to answer anything that y'all, uh, questions you might have as, as to, sorry. Fire away.
David, we really appreciate the effort that, uh, you've made in, in gathering this information. Commissioners, you have any questions to David right now?
I probably, uh, just for informational purposes, you know, we, you kind of got a snapshot of, uh, a lot of the, uh, homes throughout the county. Uh, I know the last, uh, revalue, revow, uh, there was a lot of questions about the really high-end homes. I didn't see that in there, but, uh, uh, they're still showing weakness.
Yep. So here's, yeah, the high-end development land you will see come down. Okay? But you will see an appreciation in the value of most of the higher-end homes because of the sales in there, because it's not, if it's not the land that is, that is creating the sale and that, you know, a higher value in there, it has to be the appreciation of the home. And as, you know, as you well pointed out, you know, those homes had really come down, um, in the last time, so we're seeing that bump start moving back up, but it's not in the land. It's truly in the appreciation of the building itself. Um, when we do, like I said, when we do have those sales, they are, uh, more up than down. Okay? But, you know, just want to, you know, be, you know, some, some values are going to go up, some are going to go down, some are going to stay the same. You know, this is just a, you know, a global look at the Haywood County. You know, um, mine, mine may go up, yours may go down, that other one may stay the same. This is just a global look, is across, this is just across the board in general of how things will look here. Have any questions?
I guess, David, the bottom line is, uh, overall, we're not going to be to the level we were 2011. I've talked about, uh, land values and, uh, property values.
Yeah, land, land, at least some, some, you know, not all land values are down, the majority of land values are down. Not all. Is that, you know, is that, make the, the examples of Lake Junalaska, you know, uh, some things around, uh, the Maggie Valley Country Club are substantially increased since the last reappraisal. Some things out in the rural sections of Haywood County have gone down, and have significantly gone down.
As far as housing, it's, it's sporadic up and down.
It is, it's very sporadic, yeah. Uh, if you look on a neighborhood by neighborhood basis, you'll, you can see down, down, up, down, down, up, 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 down. You know, just depends on what those sales are in, in that neighborhood that, uh, may have changed, um, the values there.
David?
Yes, sir.
From 2006 to 2011, we had a two percent, I think, decrease countywide. I believe that's right.
I think.
And then, so in 2016 versus 2011, we're going to see a decrease.
You are.
I mean, 2017.
Yeah, from, 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 from 2016, yeah. 2011, you know, was the date of reappraisal, but our, our last, you know, 2016, yeah. We will see a decrease.
A slightly decrease, because, you know, we always saw increases and I guess we're still not quite out of this malaise that we've been in.
No, the, it's the sale of land that's dr- that's dragging everything down, but, uh, you know, as most house sales, um, you will see, you know, from the sales, you do see a, a, an appreciation, uh, in, increasing in those, um, values.
That's, you know, working in the business, I, I think Kirk does too, I, I, that's what I'm seeing is, land is starting to move again, but I tell you, for four or five years, well, probably from oh, oh-nine to probably last year, or maybe for 2015, there just wasn't mu- much in the land being sold and, uh, then when it did sell, the values weren't down. But now this past year, I have seen values, you know, go up, and there are land sales. I'm getting calls for surveys for vacant lots, and I'm also getting calls for surveys for home construction. There was, um, I usually do a few of those every month. There was, I usually do a few of those every month, on average, and that's kind of come back, whereas before, I bet I went, I bet it was maybe a few every year that we did new construction, so I'm starting to see that come back too.
Yeah, I think, Chris can correct me, but I think in December, the county had more applications for new construction than they did in July and August.
Okay. That's good. I'm glad, I'm glad it's coming back. It's helping me, I know that.
Well, one of the other, you know, when you talk about new construction, though, that there's only one or two spec homes on, on the market, but most of the building now is just truly custom. Yeah, but there's not that spec home, there's, what I can tell is that there's no new inventory on MLS. That inventory is, is shrinking, and so those prices there are starting to, you know, slightly bump up too from the MLS as well, too, was a, you know, reflection. I think we'll, you'll see in 2021, the next reappraisal, I think you'll see a, a, a big difference from 17 to 21, and I think that they'll have a, more of a broader rise all the way across at that point. I can, I can see from the last three months, the last quarter of 16, and already for the first month of January, that, that, you know, it's starting to really head up, and it's starting, you know, our sale, you know, our sales are really starting to increase. We had more sales in January than we did last January.
Brandon?
No, I, I spent some time with David and Greg and his team on Friday, trying to get a true understanding of how this process works, and I appreciate that. Me being a new commissioner, it's, I knew, I knew kind of what was happening, but I wanted to hear from the horse's mouth, so to speak. But I think the main thing I'd like to get across to all the folks in the counties, if they're in a disagreement with the appraisal value, there is a process for that. And just so folks can remember that, and remember, there is a timeframe there also. But I'd like to thank them. I know they put in a lot of hard-working hours over this weekend, I think yesterday too, so I'd like to thank them for that, but just for the folks to remember that there is a process for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Brandon. The notices, when are they going to receive? The notices, they'll be in the mail the 15th or 16th of February. Okay, so they, you will receive a notice about the value of the property, be sent out the 15th or 16th, and so once you receive that, you will, you'll be able to determine your, the new value of your property. And I, I would, I would add to that, just some of the things that I've seen, David, is that, you know, it used to be that location was really important. I don't know that location is as important, but it's, it's a, it's a part of it. I think what I have seen in, in closings, and of course, I, I've had, I've done some selling of my own properties as well, is that people are looking more to the condition and quality of a property as opposed to where it's at or how big it is. And so, it, it seems like the buyers nowadays, they don't want to fix anything. And so, the, some of the pictures that you showed of the increase in values appeared to be properties, like you'd indicated earlier, that were remodeled and improved or newer structures that they don't have to do anything to, and they're willing to pay a premium not to put any of their own blood and sweat into it.
We've seen, we, we, you know, we've seen a substantial amount of renovation and refurbished properties.
Right.
This time that we, we did not see in the past.
Mm-hmm.
And that, that's where a lo, a large part of the market is, is that.
You know, with that being said, when folks get these values, if you ha, if you don't think your property is of that value, and you think it's because of the condition, it's like David said, you need to take pictures of your home, of the inside of your home. You, you need to show why that value is not what you believe it to be, instead of just saying, "My house isn't worth that," because they can't, they can't, when they do this evaluation, they can't get into everyone's home to see what it looks like. And I think that that's, I think it's really, it's a big factor in the market right now.
Mm-hmm. You know, one of the houses that we showed, you know, it looked very plain on the outside, you know, we would, it would nondescript, nothing, you know, that was fancy on the outside. And then, the pictures of, on the inside were just incredible. They had spent, you know, nice floors and, you know, new fixtures, you know, granite countertops, and, you know, this cool island, and the way they designed the kitchen and inset bookshelves and things like that. I said, "Oh, now we can see why you, you know, we added a value and you paid a hundred thousand more for it now than, you know, we didn't see on the inside," you know. But we've seen a lot of that. There's a, you know, a lot of information out there now, too, that helps us in our appraisal with the, you know, there's several websites out there, too, that download the pictures, and we've been able to look at these sales, you know, by physically visiting the property and then having some internet pictures that, when the property's sold as well, too. So, you know, all, you know, all the sales were visited, and every neighborhood has been visited, you know, during this whole process.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions up here? All right, thank you, David. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is discussion and adjustment to the agenda. Does anyone have any discussion we need to have right now? Any adjustment to the agenda? All right? If not, we'll move to the consent agenda, and first item's request approval of January 17th, 2017 regular meeting minutes. Anybody have any question, concerns about those? Any additions, deletions? All right. Next is request approval of budget amendment, and we have Julie Davis. This is about public safety.
Good morning. I have one budget amendment for you this morning, and it's for public safety. This is the detention department. We have noticed that we're spending more money than we had originally planned on housing juvenile inmates and some out-of-county, having to house some inmates, other inmates out of county, other than the juvenile inmates. So, we're increasing the detention budget for this, nineteen thousand for the juvenile and fifteen thousand for the other housing, for other inmates, for a total of thirty-four thousand, and we're taking from contingency in the general fund.
And Julie, this is due mainly to the fact that we don't really have too many places, if any, to house juveniles.
From what I understand, we house all juveniles in other counties.
And then, we had a couple of incidents in the county as well that required us to, to move those particular defendants or inmates to other locations for
Exactly.
... safekeeping and healthcare.
Exactly.
Okay. Sheriff, if you want to make a comment about it?
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
The thirty-four thousand that we have requested covers our budget for inmate housing at Central Prison in Raleigh, at the Alexander Juvenile Detention Center in Taylorsville, and also the Buncombe County Detention Center. The inmates that are taken to Central Prison are court-ordered, and the reason is normally for safekeeping. The other reasons could be medical, which is one of the main reasons that we have been using Central, as lo, as well as psychological, and because they are a danger to themselves or to someone else. Since July the first of 16, the beginning of our budget year, we've had inmates at Central Prison, mainly for medical reasons, a total of seventy-five days, at an average cost of a little over a hundred dollars a day. This housing cost does not count the medical side, which Haywood County is responsible for as well. We also have inmates that are being housed at the Buncombe County Detention Center because of safety or security risk that's been determined by our detention staff. As of today, we have two inmates in Buncombe, and a total number of days so far since July the first of this year is a one-hundred-and-twenty days. In reference to the juveniles from Haywood County that must be incarcerated, our detention center, nor no other detention center in the state of North Carolina, can house juveniles with the exception of just the juvenile intake center in Taylorsville. Since July the first, Haywood County has paid for thirty-two days of juvenile housing, and that's at a cost of a hundred-and-twenty-two dollars a day. The problem with projecting a budget for juveniles or for detention is that you don't know how many juveniles in your county is going to get in trouble in a year's time that's going to have to be incarcerated. This is a conversation that I'm going to have more with you gentlemen next week at our, at our work session, but I will tell you this, that for the year 2016, we booked in three-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-two people into our detention center here. Unfortunately, that's 5% of our population. But like I said, we'll talk more about that next week at the, at the work session. But the better part of this conversation that I wanted to have today is that our detention center is continuing to generate revenue. This past year, the calendar year, we generated two-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars that was placed back into the general fund. This revenue continues to come in from inmate phone fees, jail fees, inmate commissary, and our state misdemeanor confinement program. So hopefully, with the revenue that we generate and that we've been generating on a yearly basis, whenever that we do have to dip back into the general fund, it's, there, there's funds there that we have actually worked on being able to, to generate, to be able to take care of stuff like this.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the sheriff about that?
Well, Sheriff, also, when we meet next week, can we talk about the, the age of a juvenile? If we are in favor of moving that age up, what, to eighteen? I think that's
Absolutely.
That's a big, big talk in the state.
Well, I, I think all over the state of North Carolina, especially for sheriffs, especially for detention centers, anybody in law enforcement in our court and judicial system, moving that age is going to be very, very critical. If the state does not take this on, and they push it back down to the counties as a county mandate, that, where we have to spend this extra money, then that's something that we all probably need to stand against. But we'll, we'll talk more about that next week.
Sheriff, I, do you have any?
No, no, I'm
Yeah, I, I appreciate you coming and giving all that information. Sometimes when folks see this budget amendment and just transferring this money, sometimes behind it, it's like, "Why are we spending all that money when we've got a new jail and we have, we should have plenty of, of room?" And so, I appreciate you coming and giving the time
Absolutely.
... to speak about that.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, that is all the items for the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Shall I move?
Okay. All in favor, and I say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that passes unanimously, and then we'll move to old business. First item is request approval to enter into negotiation with the town of Waynesville for acquisition of the property at 10 Calvary Street for purposes of constructing a park, and this was the very thing that, that a lot of the public comment was about.
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, members of the public. This, this is exactly the point that they had discussed. Since we last brought this before you and discussed the making of 10 Calvary Street into a, one possible use as a park, there are three lots there that do cross the road Calvary Street. I've received word from the city manager, Rob Heitz, who is here with the mayor, and the chief, Chief Hollings said, the chief of police, Rob Heitz and Mayor Brown are also here, that their aldermen on January 10th took up the issue of the property at Haywood County, and the mayor had stated that he had discussed the concept of constructing a park on the property with Mountain Projects, who operate the Head Start Center, and that they were in favor of the park due to the fact that they are landlocked and have no place to build a recreation area for their kids, that being the primary Head Start building that serves that area. The park would serve that need. Mr. Gibbs, who spoke here this morning also, and is a member of the planning board, spoke at the alderman meeting, as did some residents of the neighborhood, and they had voted unanimously to ask the Board of Commissioners to enter into negotiation with the town to require the Calvary Street property for purposes of constructing a park. In addition, received an offer and, from Mr. Tate, and he asked to present the following offer on, nine thousand dollars for clear title. He agreed. I'd advised him of the process and sent him out some documents on our process, which is that you'd have to pay down 10% upon acceptance of the offer, and it would go through an upset bid period. He agreed that any remaining balances would be paid within 90 days, that he would do an immediate cleanup but would need a dumpster, and that he would pay any 2017 taxes. That was the, the offer that I received from Mr. Tate. So, the question, since the last time, there have been two things discussed. One, we were asked, you know, give the chance, the community a chance to come and speak, and then see if Mr. Tate came through with an offer, and see what the town's interest a little more developed was in this plan. So those, those conditions have been met. I have been out to the property. The property is exactly behind the Head Start, and I, I have seen the, the lay of the land. And also, looking across it, it is a little bit steep, but it does seem that there is significant interest on both the town's part in cleaning that up and in taking down that structure. I expect, in all candor, that the, the town is going to ask that they be responsible for the cleanup and the making of the park, and that I don't, I don't expect a lot of contribution back from the town, but we have not negotiated. But I mean, just in all candor, preliminary look at it, they're going to be taking on significant cost, and by putting forward this motion, have agreed to do so, both in the demolition, the closing of the road, and the creation of a park in that area. And you have heard from the community as to this. The closing of that road, you have heard it would be a benefit to some members of the community. That road runs right by the Head Start area, Calvary Street. And therefore, I'm, I'm putting forward back to you to ask the pleasure of the board, and if, if it was redeveloped into a community center, you're looking at a tax value and that's not significant for the land as it's developed, and the properties are split across Calvary Street, it runs through the middle of one of the lots. You're looking at, on a nine-thousand-dollar offer, and I don't know what would happen in an upset bid process, probably losing some money on, on what we have in it, even if the 2017 taxes were paid, and you're looking at a facility, you know, clean up, and there's questions as to, I was, I'm not an expert in facility rehabilitation, but it appeared to an amateur that it would need significant amounts if, if it could survive at all, and I had someone else tell me that it's probably, would be less expensive to So that's where we have it.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions of Ira?
What's the, was the value of the property, or what's, you know, oh, oh, actually, you said we'd probably lose money?
Yeah, we have probably fifteen thousand in acquire, acquisition, most of that being the legal fees. This property came down, and there, there were some other ones that had a number of airs between the three lots, and we acquired them at separate times. The building sits across two lots, and they were acquired at separate times, and then the third lot is the one that crosses the road. So we have about fifteen thousand in it. Total values on these properties, had that at one time in front of me, are, are higher than the nine thousand and higher than the fifteen between the three lots. So, but the fifteen is about what we had in attorney's fees.
Okay, I, I know that Gavin Brown, the mayor, Rob Heitz, the town manager, and Bill Hollins is the chief, are here. Do you all want to make any comment? I know you had a meeting as well in, with the town, where you had a substantial number of people that were interested in this. If anyone, if you want to come forward, I know the chief's not getting up, but I would like him to make a comment about the, the law enforcement needs of that air, of that particular, this particular piece of property, and I believe Stevie had talked about that.
Good morning, gentlemen. Gavin Brown, mayor of Waynesville. I would like to ask the board to entertain our offer to negotiate the purchase of the property. It's interesting that today you heard a It's interesting that today you heard a presentation by David Francis about the values in the community. The concept of addition by subtraction is a little difficult for people to understand. I know some of the commissioners are concerned because we would be taking land value or tax value away if the town of Waynesville owned it. I believe that actually we would be adding value because we would create a better community, a safer community, a community in which people would want to live and stay. And I think these folks here today have made that abundantly clear. They love their community. By the addition of a park in that area, the total tax value, I would suggest, would go up over time as opposed to the condition that it's in now. All of us know that we have problems in certain neighborhoods, and these folks have come and said today, we want to work with the town, we want to work with the county to make our area a better neighborhood. In addition, the property that we're talking about sits right next to Mountain Projects. I chair that board. Mrs. Dowling has indicated that she has an interest in having a park in that area because it allows a place for their students and their families to gather. At this point in time, they don't have that at that location. As you know, the black community in Haywood County and in Waynesville is a special community to all of us. You may remember that on the opposing corner, there was a Rosenwald School at one time. Do any of you know what a Rosenwald School is? Well, I didn't know either. It's a sort of a private system of schools that was created back in the early 1900s by a gentleman who started Sears Roebuck. And that that type of history and that type of community is what we're trying to recreate for these folks. Bill can explain to you the difficulties that we've had from a law enforcement situation. Elizabeth Teague is here, our director of public works, excuse me, our development director. And of course, Mr. Heitz is here to answer any questions that you may have. Can I tell you that we have definitive plans now what we would do at that area? No, but we are working on our recreation master plan as we speak now. That is on our agenda in the next meeting, and will be on our discussion at our retreat. So we're going to incorporate that park, if we're able to purchase it, into the overall master plan that the town of Waynesville is developing. Once again, I think it's an opportune time for two governments to work together to create value in the community, and I would hope that you would authorize Ira to negotiate with us to see if we can't reach an amenable sales price. I do want to make it perfectly clear that I am not anti-capitalist, I'm not against the free market system whatsoever. There are times, though, when the free market system simply doesn't work. You put this property up for public auction and nobody bid on it. You had to buy it. And I think that's a time that indicates that the free market system is not working at this point in time, and that I would suggest that the two communities could work together to create value for everybody in the town of Waynesville and Haywood County. Are there any questions that you might have of me as the mayor, or anything that I might mention to you?
Do you have an idea of maybe when it would be cleaned up so it's not in the condition that it is now? I know that the park plans could come a little later, but as far as the cleanup, so we can stop some of the activity that's ongoing there?
If I know Bill well enough, it'll start pretty quickly. It's been a continuing source of problem in the community. I would expect that that would be in our budget for next year, so we would start, if not this year, next year. We have several other projects. I don't want to get out of school, but I can assure you that it would be done within the next year.
You have a question, Gavin?
You know, of course, we had a lot of questions last time, and, you know, we didn't have a lot of information to go on. And, you know, one of the questions that I had, you know, was, what does the community think? And, you know, obviously, you all are here and you all support this thing, and, you know, that was one of the big, big questions that I had. You know, I wanted to know what you all felt about it. And, you know, I'm always, you know, like to think that private industry, you know, can go, but I did visit the property. I made an effort to go out there. I made an effort to speak with a couple of you all, and, you know, and I appreciate y'all being here and showing us your concern or what you all would really like for your community.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate the opportunity. Kirk, did you have a question?
I don't have any more questions. I didn't know if Bill wanted to comment.
Thank you.
And Rob, I don't want to leave you out.
Okay.
Okay.
Good morning.
Morning.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here and speak on this topic. Several years ago, that property really gained the attention of the police department, and not in a positive way. We had a number of issues there where the condition of the property was just conducive to harboring individuals that we were either looking for or activity that was going on in the neighborhood. It presented an area for people to flee to because of the overgrowth, it was the weeds, the trees, that type of thing, the brush enabled people to hide in there, the building itself. We would often find people that were hiding in that building. If you walk through the building now, as some of the individuals have said, people have moved mattresses in there. It's just used for drug use. There are signs of other stuff going on in the building again that reached our attention. So after we talked about it as a staff, again, similar to what Mr. Sarals had said, we didn't want to go to the community and say, this is what the police department, this is what Waynesville thinks you need to do with this property. The initial person I met with was Mr. Gibbs. We discussed what he thought the community would like to see on that property. We thought it was very important, but we just didn't go in there and start telling people what they needed, but what they would like to see on that piece of property on Calvary Street. From there, it rolled into conversations with Mrs. Forney, Mr. Bryson. Again, he has property that adjoins the Calvary Street property, telling us of some of the issues there. We made lots of trips to the register of deeds office, the tax office, Mr. Swanger, when he was sitting in your chair, Mr. Kirkpatrick, as far as what we could do after we found out that the property was hung up in the court system. But bottom line is, the police department has the goal, just like all of us do, of making that a better community and cleaning up that corner. That would help us significantly. And again, how we did that, we went to the community and asked what they would want to see and how to clean up that property. And that's what we were told is the development of a park. We are 100% for that. Again, cleaning up that area, keeping the brush down, keeping the weeds down, putting a nice pavilion up there. It's easy for us to patrol right now. We have to park, get out, and walk that area on foot, that whole thing, and that's not an easy thing to do. So again, we're 100% for the project of putting a park on that particular piece of property.
Thank you, chief. You have any questions, the Commissioners? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And the only thing I want to bring up before Commissioners, before I ask you any questions, or if you have any comments, is the fact that Mr. Caldwell did bring up a few questions about the use of the property, and Mr. Tate's the only person who has shown any interest in it. And so we've afforded the town of Waynesville the opportunity to speak. I do want to afford Mr. Tate an opportunity to answer the questions that perhaps Mr. Caldwell had and the others have about your use of the intentions of the property, if you want to come forward.
I guess what my immediate plans are, short term, I was going to clean up the building as I mentioned to Mr. Dove. The town says a year. I'm talking about immediate. Clean up the brushes, that's no problem. Clean up the weeds, that's no problem. Clean up the beer cans and stuff, that's no problem. Renovate the property as an event center, that's my proposal. If approved, I will work with the town and the county. I have had several people that were interested in my proposal of an event center. I haven't got all the names yet, but I'm working on a petition. Like I said, if approved, I will clean it up immediately, pay the taxes, pay the sale price.
Let me ask this, Mr. Tate. Have you developed a property before? Have you done development before?
Yes, I have.
And is that in Waynesville?
No, Bunkin County. I have done some work around Waynesville. Me and my brother have.
The financing of this project, are you financing it yourself, or are you having a bank finance it? Or, I mean, it seems like a substantial amount-
Both, I got investor, I got bank, and all three.
Okay, okay. All right. Anything else you want to say about anything that's been said this evening, or this morning?
I'm here to address any questions.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Mr. Tate?
I was wondering, when you say event center, what kind of events do you mean? What would that be?
It could be a wedding, it could be a party, it could be a picnic, it could be event. Your birthday party could be over there. Hey, that's what I'm saying.
I don't want to celebrate any of those.
I didn't say that, but anyway.
Do you see this as a profit-making venture, or is it more of just a...
It's going to be two ways. It's going to be a profit. I'm in business to make profit, no problem about that. And then the county, I mean, the community will have access to this center. So, you know, it's ways, two ways. I'm going to make a dollar, yes. Got to pay the lights, the water, taxes, and then to, then have the events that comes.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tate.
Thank you.
Ira, do you have anything else?
I believe at this point you have heard the different information that was gathered.
Okay. Commissioners, what do you, we've got this old business to make a decision regarding this. I'll take any comments that you have.
I read called question.
Okay. Rand, anything?
No, I mean, both sides seems like they're wanting to clean the property up, which I appreciate that from Mr. Tate and the community, which I know several of these folks in the community, which I thank a lot of. And I appreciate both of them's concern, so it seems like we're in a win-win situation either way. Even though we will get the tax value from the property if Mr. Tate gets it, it's still going to be very minimum, sounds like. So again, I think either way we'll be, so that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, Mike. Okay. I guess my comments on it were, you know, it'd be nice to get some tax money back. The fact of the matter, this is kind of one of those properties that I have seen over the years. Sometimes, you know, taxes are owed on a piece of property and you're not, it's not necessarily in the county's best interest to go after it because it takes a lot of money to get it, and then once you get it, you have it, and you've spent a lot of money. So if you see, you know, $500 or $600 owed on a piece of property over several years, sometimes you look and go, maybe we better wait another couple of years before we foreclose on that because, you know, we're going to spend a substantial amount of money to get it. I think one of the things we wanted to see was interest in the community. And I believe at the town of Waynesville meeting that they showed a lot of interest, and then, and you're here today showing the interest in that, especially an adjoining owner of the property who has, you probably haven't even really spoken your mind as to the difficulties you've had. And, but I appreciate you coming because we need to know that. To me, the solidity of the fact that the town is willing to take this on and clean this up, and I know it will deter future criminal activity, is something that's paramount. And also, I guess I have some concerns, Mr. Tate, with just the fact that the ability to get this done and finance it to the extent you want to get done, and I don't think, I don't know that the ability to partner with the park is there with the town. So those are my comments. And with that, I'll entertain a motion. You want to make a motion?
I make the motion that we enter into negotiations with the town of Waynesville for acquisition of the property at 10 Calvary Street.
I'll second. Okay. Any discussion?
I just want to make the comment that, you know, this is a tough call for me because I know both parties. I know the community and I know Mr. Tate. If it was a completely for sure thing that was going to be an investment in the community and it was going to be there for sure, and, you know, it'd be hard not to go with Mr. Tate, but we don't have that exactly. And we, I think we do have it with the community and with the town of Waynesville, so.
Yeah, I just, I echo what Michael said. Philosophically, I'd rather it be, stay in private hands, but, and one thing, I was looking at the sketch that was provided by the town. They've got, you know, a walkway from Head Start up to this area, so I know it'll be used every day by Head Start because there's a playground up there. And the Head Start area, when you look at it, they've got a very small play area, so this would be a way to get the kids up to that area, and if there's a playground, I'm sure, and it'll be supervised. So I know it'll be being used every day just from that. And then on the weekends, I'm sure others will be using it. So I would just say for the town. And then the town, their board has unanimously supported it, and I do want to work with the towns. I know Canton's been asking for some help with their pool project, and I feel like, you know, we try to do something on both sides of the county, and this might be, could be our contribution on this end of the county. For those reasons, the Head Start and making an equal contribution, that we're going to try to help, I'm sure we'll try to help Canton with their pools, so I think that might be a good, something we can do on this end.
Yeah, I do agree with that, and always I've agreed with the fact about the private enterprise. I mean, we'd like to see private enterprise take on properties. Gavin made a really good point in the fact that if this property's cleaned up, it will increase the values. You might be increasing your taxes next to you there, Stevie, but anyway. It would be an improvement of the value, so. All right, then I will call them. And I think also, Kevin, that's, it's a real good idea that possibly we look at this venture in a way, also with the Canton Pool, and possibly in negotiations, it not necessarily be in any negotiation as to price. We'll think about that when we discuss the negotiations, we may discuss that as a commission. All right. All in favor of having the, Ira Dove, the county manager, negotiate with town of Waynesville for the acquisition of the property at 10 Calvary Street, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, those opposed, and that passes unanimously. Thank you for being here. Next item is request approval of contract with Cooper Construction for construction of the new Moone Cove Convenience Center in the amount of $574,016, et cetera. Good to see you. Mr. Caldwell was my basketball coach when I was seven years old. I played with this son. Yeah, it's on that disc. I didn't recognize it, sorry. Yeah. Enjoyed playing basketball with his son Alfred. We had a good time playing. Hadn't seen him in a long time, so it's good to catch up. Commissioners, before you, you have the request to finalize the contract with Cooper Construction for the upgrades and expansion of the Moone Cove Convenience Center. Mr. Kathy with McGill and Associates is here with me today for any technical questions that you may have. Some of the, several questions that you all asked last time that we met when we asked to go into contract negotiation with them, is there any room for movement for lessening the price there? Mr. Kathy consulted Cooper Construction several times about that. They were unable to make any movement on the price. So one of the things that I did since to ensure the quality was I added another engineering there to be able, firm, to be able to test the, for the soils. If you remember, part of this contract, and a large part of this contract, is the removal of some swampy, muddy dirt out of there and go back to compact that. You know, there was estimated volume that we would have, and so what they did, concerns that the Commissioners had, was that we had hired a technical expertise there that would be able to go in there and say, all right, yeah, this is how much of the bad material that you have, this is what you'll need to replace it with, or, well, we didn't think there was that much of bad material. So I thought the additional cost there, due to the concerns that was voiced to me, was a benefit to the- was benefit to the project to add that there. So those two things would be approved, need to be approved for that would be the, for the construction of Cooper of $574,016. And Rennell Lammons for soil and site analysis testing of $9,375. One of the things I want to be mindful of, just some quick facts for you, that this is, again, is a 50-year build-out for the facility. Last year, in 2016, the Moone Cove Convenience Center received four point five million tons of waste went through there. One million pounds of recycling. So on average, about 980 folks go through there daily with 18,200 pounds of waste, about 4,000 pounds of recycling daily. About 46% of the population live within five miles of this convenience center. Definitely see why it is one of the busiest. And we look at our numbers, and it looked like we did have an uptick in the folks that visited there last year as well, too, from the last time we did a traffic study. So any of those questions that you have of me or Mr. Kathy will be glad to answer, and then I have one other thing to talk about, about the possibility of a temporary site that I'd seek your approval on as well.
Okay, I had a lot of questions there last time, and I just wanted to come back and address a few of those. I do appreciate the effort to go back and, you know, see if you could, could do, you know, about you know, reducing the cost somewhat, although that was unsuccessful. You did put a measure in place to ensure that we could possibly do that, because sometimes when that figures out there, you don't get any help on trying to reduce it. So I appreciate that. I also, you know, went back and kind of asked some questions and some thoughts, you know, what-ifs, and, you know, if we had have tried to just remodel, of course, if we'd have remodeled, it would have been a patch, and it would have been a continuing effort that would have cost unknown figures over a period of time. A lot of the issues that we're going to address there are already there that we're dealing with now, which was going to cost an absorbent amount of money. But I did a, just a little bit of figuring around, and, you know, we're projecting this thing is going to last potentially 50 years, except for some maintenance along the same.
Yes, sir.
So at $574,000 divided by 50, that's a little over $11,000 a year. And then we've got 250,000 people use that thing every year. You divide that out, that's a nickel a person.
Oh, I did go that far, yeah, yeah.
When you look at it that way, and amount of volume, and the projected longevity of it, and then it, it's not such a big pill to swallow, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. That's, that's some good observations that I have thought about. Kevin, you have anything?
No additions from my side. Just a concern like Michael had, you know, the cost was shocking to me as I look over these numbers. Then you think, like Michael said, and you divide that out, it don't seem as bad. And the convenience centers is one thing that I think everybody in the county uses. We have a lot of services here in Haywood County, but convenience centers, you know, I use them daily. And it is important to have, and from what I understand from talking with Mr. Francis, it is going to be, put us out for 50 years, so. Again, a big concern with the amount of money that we're spending, shocking, but it is definitely something that's needed.
I'd like to make one, one other comment. You know, you look at our county now, and because of the efforts that the people before us made to try to take care of solid waste. I mean, I've rode around and looked, and, you know, we've got a relatively clean county. We don't have a lot of garbage here and a lot of garbage there. And for most of us that was born and raised here, and I'm telling my age now, but I can remember, and I'm going to refer to Jonathan Creek, because I swam in it, I played in it, and we dodged junk cars in it. We stood on top of them and dove into the creek. You drove by the bridge, you see people throwing garbage into the, into the thing. There was cans. There's old tires everywhere. What few garbage slash dumps we had was somebody's behind their house up in the hollow or somewhere like that. We don't have that now. And as much as it costs sometimes to do things, I don't want to go back to that, to that situation. I don't want to do that. So, so, you know, I had to, I swallowed real hard and did a lot of thinking, and it's, it's money well spent.
It's funny you mention that. I remember, you know, down below the barn where we had, you know, the cars were put in there to help erosion, the old cars, and then, you know, the trash that was along the roads. Yeah, that's not that long ago, but, you know, it seems, yeah. But, yeah, we, as I said, you know, I wanted to show you all the, you know, for, this is the size of the total contract.
This is size of the what?
This is the size of the total contract right here. Is that this is how technical, you know, that it got in there with all the things that needed to go on there, you know, between the dirt, the electrical, the expansion, everything there, the stormwater runoff. So it was a very technical contract in the end, not as simple as, you know, thinking, "Oh, we're going to do this, do a little paving, build a nice new fence, you know, and throw some more concrete down to add a pad or two." You know, with the problems that we had under there, this is what, you know, it's a big contract.
Even then, also, the volume, I'm guessing the volume will increase if this renovation is done. The number of people, more people?
We're there, okay.
Yeah, let me, let me just, let's stop it right there and stop for just a second to change the tape, and then we'll come right back to pick that up.